...speaking on video broadcasting.
I'm the board and thank you very much for letting me address you. This is just a reminder to the board, citizens and the press that we are videotaping all the school board meetings that we can tonight. And there are some from before that people can access if you'd like at EPRC.wordpress.com. And feel free to access that anytime if you need. I can give that out again to anybody that needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doncic. The second request to address the board is Ms. Pam Strunk speaking on property taxes. She's from McCounji.
First, I just wanted to ask the school board to consider webcasting our school board meetings. I know it's a big term in our school district about going green. And in the theme of going green, it would be great to not drive our cars to the school board meetings and to be able to watch them from home in the spirit of going green. I also wanted to ask the school board to strive for a budget that leads to a no property tax increase this year. And I also wanted to ask the school board to give a detailed budget online so that property taxpayers and parents and the public can understand our budget a little bit more. I know last year we had on the radio, I had listened to Bobby Gunther's show, and it was mentioned on the radio that we had $700,000 in overtime last year. However, I don't know if that was true because our budget doesn't break down what is the base salary and how much of it is overtime. And whether that's overtime or whether we're calling it extra time for extra work, it is a little confusing to the taxpayer and to the parents. So if there's anything that the board could do to help parents understand and to help taxpayers understand the difference between overtime or extra work for extra pay or what the terminology is, and to please put that on the budget online, it would be extremely helpful so that there just aren't comments on the radio that we really don't understand what they're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strunk. The next request to address the board I have is from Brenda Truay speaking about the school calendar starting before Labor Day and the Home Access Center.
Thank you. Given the number of years the school has started after Labor Day and the fact that there's only about six months notice, that many of us have had to put our work schedules in for vacation time already, and you know, I, we don't want our children to miss the first week of school because it's so important. I'm requesting that the board consider making the decision for the 2013-14 year, make that announcement ahead of time so the parents and everyone else associated with school can be there accordingly. The other item has to do with the Home Access Center. That's being heavily promoted, I guess in the sense of being green. I'm asking that like every other web application that we go to and use each day, that we can change our password to the, to our accounts online. Having to come to the office and show ID and having somebody set your password and then other people know it seems not quite as secure as it should be in 2012. So I'm asking that be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Truay. The next person I have is Dina Zoski speaking about Seven Generations Charter School.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I don't know if Seven Generations Charter School is on the agenda tonight. There are no copies of the agenda in the map. Is Seven Generations on the agenda tonight to be discussed? Okay. So then what I'll do is just to give you a little bit of perspective and, but you know, my thoughts. My name is Dina Zoski. I'm a resident of East Penn, and I'm also a mom of two kids who go to Seven Generations. I'm also one of the founders of Seven Generations Charter School. And what I want to do is spend just a couple of minutes to tell you why. And there are many reasons. But I want to focus on what's unique about Seven Generations for me as a mother and also as a founder. There were a handful of founders several years ago, myself included, that sat around the table and thought about what it means to create a school that has a very integrated approach to not only rigorous academics, but more importantly, community problem solving and how we can empower our children to think creatively and innovatively about problem solving in the future because lord knows we have many, many problems that need some creative solutions. And so part of that vision was the founding members came together and in fact, what I have, I'm very proud of is that their, the parent group and the engagement of Seven Generations Charter School, in my opinion, was unbelievable in a very short period of time. I actually was unable to be as engaged as many of the folks that are actually sitting behind me today as I was called to be a commissioner by the court in Laurin McCounji Township. So while I began the journey as a founding member, I was involved, but not nearly as much as many of the parents who have dedicated so much time in the creation of this charter school. I remain involved, not on the board, but as a parent who is also very critically engaged in seeing that the vision of the school remains true to those who founded that school. And I believe very strongly that while there were some bumps in the road, that vision still holds true today. One of the things that I believe is very important is that the actual curriculum framework is very much aligned with the vision and that EIC curriculum framework, which I believe is, Seven Generations is the only school in the state of Pennsylvania to use the EIC framework. And there are, I believe, 16 departments of education around the United States that use the curriculum framework. That in and of itself for me is a very good alignment with the vision, but I also feel it's very unique in that use of curriculum in that not only the green environment, but the environment that we live in, where teaching children about anything within that framework. And most importantly, how do they use those complex thinking skills to come up with solutions based on that integration? And most importantly, to do that in a hands-on way because as we know, when children are engaged, when children are excited about school, they come to school, they learn more in school, and I think the test results as a result of that will, that will follow. And so I wanted to share that with you, but also I wanted to say as a parent, before my children went to Seven Generations, even though I was a founder, I felt it was important for me to do my due diligence on the curriculum. And so I spent time very nicely with Moravian, with Swain, with Jefferson, the principal in Jefferson was wonderful, with United Friends School in Quakertown, as well as Seven Generation, looked at the curriculum frameworks of each, spent lots of time looking at individual fidelity and rigor. And I felt like the EIC curriculum really is a unique approach and very much aligned with the vision.
Ms. Zoski, if you wind it up as you asked.
Sure. Okay, so I'll wind it up with a personal note and the most important one. And that is, I have never seen a school that has so many parents and grandparents and community partners and folks involved day to day in the school, that are there every day, volunteering, working, reading, painting, doing whatever has to be done to make that school a success. And when my kids in July say, "When does school start again?", I know that we are really something right. Thank you.
Thank you. The last request I have this evening is from Ms. Susan File of McCounji, speaking also about Seven Generations.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this moment. I just want to, first of all, say how impressed I've been with Dr. Seidenberger. I am the current director of Seven Generations Charter School. Today marks my eighth month anniversary. I started there May 23rd. We've been working really hard and we know that our charter renewal is up for review. And I've had some conversations with Dr. Seidenberger and most recently a meeting where he came with so many thoughtful and very precise questions. He's doing a remarkable job of, of holding us to what we need to be doing. And I thank him for that because that holds us accountable and we want to be held accountable. Our job is not an easy one, but we are passionate about what we do. It is a wonderful school. Dina mentioned the curriculum. It's amazing to me. I mean, three and a half years ago, this school wasn't even here. And now this EIC curriculum, we're one of 37 schools in the country practicing this procedure, some public and some private and a few charter schools. And the gentleman who started this movement, his name is Joe Lieberman, and he is, he was commissioned by the Harvard University Press to write a book about the curriculum. And Seven Generations is one of the four model schools that will be featured in that book, which is really amazing. By the end of the school year, we will be the only school in Pennsylvania certified as an EIC school. So a lot of wonderful stuff is happening and we really look forward to working more with you. You have a wonderful school district and thank you so much for everything you do. Oh, by the way, we, I sent you all an email today. We'd love to have you come and visit us and see firsthand what we're all about at Seven Generations. So please let us know when you'd like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. File. No other requests to address the board. We'll move on to item number three, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? None appearing. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Now it gives me great pleasure to introduce our SGA representatives, Kristen French and Chip Jockey, to give us an update on what's happening from the students.
All right. Before Christmas break, we allowed students to take pictures with Santa Claus in school. We also allowed people in the community to take pictures with Santa Claus at basketball games, and the money raised during the basketball games was then donated to coaches versus cancer.
Our first semester of the 2011-2012 year is coming to an end starting Thursday of this week. Midterms were taken Friday and end tomorrow, meaning the second semester will be started. The exams were administered over three days and follow a period by period schedule.
The official date for graduation has been set for this year senior class. It is Sunday, June 10th at 1:00 PM and will take place at Lehigh University Stabler, Stabler Arena.
We have numerous amounts of kids who were chosen as Mayas High School scholar athletes for the fall. So congratulations to Jason Graybell for Boys Cross Country, Lydia Brew for Girls Cross Country, Lena Phillips for Field Hockey, Brian Oddle for Football, Colin Cox for Golf, Blair Geiger for Boy Soccer, Sandra G for Girls Tennis, and Katie Christinger for Girls Volleyball.
Auditions for district band and chorus were held on Sunday, December 3rd, 2011 at Parkland High School. Also, EHS's drama department will present the classical musical Guys and Dolls on April 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th at 7:00 PM in the EHS auditorium. There will also be a matinee performance on April 14th at 2:00 PM, so support the drum.
Math league members will participate in a national test called the American Math Competition on February 7th during school hours. Students with the highest scores will be invited to take part in the American Invitational Mathematics exam on March 15th.
On December 12th, 2011, the EHS Spanish Club got together to decorate holiday cards in both English and Spanish. These cards were then sent to an organ in Hamilton to children reaching their full potential as productive, productive and caring citizens.
Lastly, in February, we have a dance coming up called Snowball. This year we'll be doing a candy land theme and it will take place on February 11th. That's all we have.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate hearing everything that's going on in our schools. And as always, if you don't want to stick around for the boring adult business here, you're more than willing and more than ready to leave and get back to something more interesting like your homework.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to a sure to be pleasing item here, everybody's favorite subject, the 2012-2013 preliminary budget. I guess I should have a motion on this before we end the discussion. So can I have a motion on the preliminary budget motion that's on the agenda, please?
Second.
All right. Dr. Seidenberger, would you start your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Relative to the preliminary budget, I think the, want to remind the board that several board meetings ago, we took action to seek permission or to get a total from the state regarding exceptions. And basically what this budget does is formalize that and make a motion that allows us in the form of, Mrs. Irvin, to submit to the state a letter asking for Vanessa's approval for what the value of those exceptions might be. We've already indicated to you that this, we believe the value of the exception is going to be dramatically less than last year, but we won't know that. I also want to remind the board and the public that over the course of the last two budgets, we've had a certain degree of value to those exceptions and we have not used the full value. In fact, last year we used very little, if any, of the exceptions. So I certainly will repeat my, my promise to the board and to the community that my staff and I will continue to work on this budget. And our attitude is that the preliminary budget you're going to pass tonight will certainly not be the budget that we recommend when we see you in May for the recommendation to approve the preliminary final budget. Is that right? This is, is that?
This is the, this is the.
I'm sorry. The correct term is the.
Proposed final.
They keep changing. Proposed final budget. So this is the preliminary budget and this is a step. We're giving you both versions tonight. And as we talked about last year, this is a starting point. If you've been reading the paper, districts are seeking exceptions, will do this, and we certainly understand that there's going to be press tomorrow about the tax increase. But I will also ask our reporters to put in and do us justice that this is a preliminary budget and certainly 99% that this is not going to be the tax rate that we're going to have in this budget, I can tell you that. So we know the headlines are going to be there, but we ask for that, your cooperation, providing that we expect this to be lower when we make our presentation in March. So we will continue to work on this budget. There's lots of information we do not know. We've talked about that openly and honestly. For instance, we don't know about enrollment next year. We don't know what funding we're going to receive from the state. We don't know about federal funding yet. We don't know if anything's going to happen in terms of developments cropping up overnight. And so we will, our process now is to work with all of our department persons who've submitted budgets, to meet with them, to work with them, to ask the tough questions, and to come back with the board with recommendations that we feel are educationally sound, but at the same time fiscally prudent. And so this is where we are at this point. We would certainly be happy to answer any questions that the board members have. Mrs. Irvin Hall is here tonight. Mr. Glance is here. And the three of us will do the best we can to answer your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Seidenberger. Again, I'm trying to get the terminology straight. It used to be called in Act One, the proposed preliminary budget. Now is, is just called preliminary budget, Mrs. Irvin?
Well, it's proposed, it's not proven as the one.
But it's not the. What we used to call the preliminary budget, which is the one we passed to pass in May, by May 31st.
No, that's the proposed one.
That's the proposed final now. Okay. So.
I feel better now.
We have three passes at this budget yet, okay? This one is simply a place marker for the Act One exceptions. I want to get that straight from everybody. Then we will have, and by the end of May, we will have to pass the proposed final budget. And by the end of June, we have to actually pass the final budget. So between now and then, we will have all kinds of opportunities to whittle away at various things. This is, like I said, a pro forma exercise. Now are the questions for Dr. Seidenberger or the team? Mr. Bacher?
Can you talk about, could you use your microphone? Can you talk about what assumptions are in place in this budget in terms of class size and enrollment? I, I understand you don't know, but.
Basically, the only thing I can tell you, Mr. Bacher, is that we moved our staff laterally. There are no new positions in this budget. But again, being a new board member, let me explain. The, the key event for us coming up in the next couple of months is kindergarten registration. We have great data and I think we can predict with a fair degree of accuracy now after looking at, at enrollment or registration patterns, that there's always a gap between what families register in March, and then we have the second wave coming in sometime in August. And I think our predictors are pretty good in that. So that's the first thing we look at. The last couple of years, we've been able to reduce the amount of staff members we need for kindergarten. So that's the first key element. The second major factor for us is looking at our high school course selections. Students in high school think they, they might have just finished or are in the process of making selections for next year's, what the courses will be. We'll take a look at those numbers and certainly remember last year, last fall, when I, when I gave my report on class size, although I think we're pretty good in high school, we certainly don't want to have rather large classes in certain areas like math and sciences. So we'll take a look at those. Other things that are factors that we do not know at this point are retirements. Last year, we were able to take a look at individuals who were retiring and then we asked very fundamental questions. The organization, do we need to replace those individuals? And we not only did that with teachers, but we did it with aides, administrators, and really every level in the organization. And so we'll do that. What I said publicly last year, and I'll say again this year, and talk to Mrs. Keeler and then our principals, I don't know if we're going to even approach one-third of the number of people we had that retired last year. Last year, we had a, we had a decent amount, I think probably 22, 23 people that retired last year. I don't know if we're going to get the double digits this year. So all that will play, and these are variables that I don't know. So basically, we straight line the staff until we get more information. But that's the, probably the single most critical factor that's going to work on this budget. And you know, most of our expenses, we're a labor-intensive organization, so looking at the cost of our employees is certainly paramount for us. We, we have also increased our principal budgets by about 2% this year. The last couple of years, we've trimmed those budgets back. And so we thought at this particular time, we've increased those budgets. Now, certain budgets, we have not had a chance to really look at, and that would be people, personnel services, and special education. And again, we'll do more of due diligence as we move forward.
Ms. Doncic.
As a new board member as well, I would find, I would echo the public's thoughts that, hey, as you're putting the preliminary together, and I know, you know, all these things, many of the considerations, but we also have a budget that looks at a flat budget this year. I know it would be difficult. I can't imagine what it would look like, but if we could see a specific budget and what that would mean to the community and to the kids, I think it would really be, it would help me, it would help me understand why we need to increase. And also, something else I think that would be useful in reviewing the budget is if we could see which lines are mandated, what are contracted, and what are discretionary, because I know that there are those three. And it would just be helpful to be able to look at a specific line and say, 100% of this is contracted, you know, 80% of this is mandated, and so forth.
I don't know if we can honestly do that, but whereas an obvious mandated category, we certainly can refer that to you. I, I don't know if we can ever drill down and give you an absolute regarding that. We've, we've had conversations with other superintendents, other business managers, and, and what you're asking is extremely difficult to do because we're going to get down to pencils and paper and things like that. I don't know if we can do that, but whereas an obvious mandate like special education, we can give you those broad-based numbers if that would help.
That would help.
Okay. We'll do the best we can. Let's put it that way.
Yeah. And then I wondered too, would it be possible to have a function and the object code, I see it doesn't rail down to enough detail, how to do objects? I mean, Mrs. Irvin's been extremely helpful in giving information. However, the object codes that are adding up, they don't have the detail of the object code to add to the higher object.
As, as we move forward in process, I'm sure that, this being your first budget, we would gladly spend as much time as you need with our staff to help you understand the budget.
That would be great. I agree.
I would like to comment that the other thing that's a big factor in all of this is that we will not hear what the governor's budget proposal is, let alone find out what the final number is. But we will only hear about the governor's proposal on February 7th. And all of the preliminary trial balloons coming out of Harrisburg are that they're crying that they don't have any money. Revenues are down, everybody's going to be flatlined or less, and blah, blah, blah. So I don't expect that we can count on much from the state in terms of any increase and we will be lucky not to get a decrease. So we'll have to factor that in to our discussions after we hear the governor's budget proposal. And then we'll know what he's pushing for, and then we'll see what happens when he pushes the legislation. Any other comments? Mr. Ershak?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. The, the challenge, as you note, is that the state is under a fair amount of budget pressure right now. They are going, right now, under law, the state shares half of the pension costs for the Piersers Fund. With the dramatic rate increase that is coming to all school districts, then that means an increase in expenditures at the state level. If they want to keep spending flat, then they're going to end up cutting our basic education subsidy to make up the difference. I would not be surprised at all to see that. And if that is the case, we're going to have a number of additional challenges in this budget. As Dr. Seidenberger mentioned, we have so many unknowns at this point. This is something that's required by the law, but the law was created without any consideration for the practical matters. We are six and a half months into our fiscal year. We have not had our kindergarten registration. We, we don't know so much about what's coming in the, in the current, the coming fiscal year, that this is, to, to call this a wild guess is perhaps an oversimplification. We, we do the best we can at this point, and as the data becomes more available over the next few months, we'll have a lot better idea of what our revenue and our expenditures pictures are really going to look like for next year's budget. Ms. Doncic requested, what would a, a flat budget look like for next year? Well, there's, there's no way for the superintendent to do that unless we tell him what programs to cut. You know, there are, if, if we were to try to have a flat budget, there are certain things that are coming in to this budget that we know. Higher electricity rates. Higher electricity rates, potentially higher fuel rates for the buses, a higher contract rate for the bus contract, some fairly modest increases for staff. We have a number of things we know are coming. We potentially will have state cuts in funding. We know our federal funding, well, we don't know, but according to the preliminary budget, our federal funding is going down. So we would have to give priorities to the superintendent. What programs would we want him to eliminate to bring in a zero budget? Should he eliminate advanced placement courses? Should he eliminate remedial education? There are so many things that we can't get rid of in our budget. I think that's a little unfair to ask him what it would look like. You also mentioned the concept of mandated, contracted, and discretionary. Our expenses are seldom so cut and dried. Third grade is mandatory under the state law. We're required to educate students from the age of six, seven? Six to 18. So we have to have third grades mandated. But all the teachers are under contract. So is that a contracted expense? Yes. Is it a mandated expense? Yes. Are there discretionary expenses in there? Well, yeah, we could potentially cut some of the supplies that we put in the third grade classroom. We don't buy as many art supplies or workbooks. So there are all three expenses in the third grade. Bus transportation, except for our special ed, is probably the largest discretionary expense on our budget, but it's also contracted. We're under contract with the bus company to do that. So I don't think we can take, I don't think there are very many dollars in the budget that fit only into one of those categories. Most of them are crossing categories. So I would be quite opposed to spending staff time trying to codify every expenditure in the budget to try to break that out. I think that would be a lot of wasted time. If there are certain things that you think are overspending in the district, then bring those forward. Let's take a look at them and see if there are places that we can trim. That would be my recommendation, certainly. Because this budget is, in essence, a paper exercise required by Act One, I'll support it, knowing that the tax increase, if any, that comes out for this year will be much lower than what it says here. The expenditures will be lower, and hopefully, the revenues will be higher as well. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Ershaw. Ms. Donches, is there anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? Phil, Ms. Donches?
If I could just respond, Mr. Ershaw. Thank you for that. I could, I envisioned three columns, contracted, mandated, and discretionary. And I understand that there could be different percentages into those columns. And we don't look down to the county, but just to give a general idea, I understand that. So if I could be done, I would appreciate it. As far as cutting programs, I know that these are hard times, and that we're not going to get all the money that we need to have all the programs, or possibly not have all the programs. But I believe that that is what the board asks the administration to do. We don't wait for the recommendations to what programs need to be cut, but have some administration stuff to look at the programs and make, and make those decisions. And, you know, I'm hoping that that wouldn't have to happen, but if it does, if that's what a 0% flat budget entails, then I think that's a very important exercise to go through.
Just one comment, Mrs. Donches. We are here to make the hard decisions, not the superintendent. He's here to support education, so...
I'm sorry, but don't we just say, like, obviously, I'll be going to my support lesson on Thursday and Friday, so I'll wait to comment further.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Virchell, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Ershaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Donches?
Nay.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Polatana?
Nay.
Mr. Bacher?
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz?
Nay.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Six ayes, three nays.
All right. Next item on the agenda is reported to superintendent schools, Dr. Thomas Seidenberger.
Mr. Ballard, we're going to withdraw from the Business Operations category. We're going to withdraw item six, Rep. Pay. Got some questions for the company that did not respond to us, and finally managed, so we're going to withdraw.
All right, so note that on your agenda, please. Item number six, under Business Operations, Section Eight.
Okay. Passing out. Again, school calendar. What we've done in the past is provide the board with a school calendar before we ask you to vote on. We'll propose the calendar, we'll ask you to vote on it at the next board meeting. And just a couple comments. I went back and I looked at minutes from our budget presentations last year, and I was trying to, someone raised an issue that, that, have we talked about a calendar, a pre-Labor Day calendar before? And I found two occasions when I did speak about that. Almost a year ago, on Valentine's Day last year, I raised the issue that there was a possibility we may be coming back to the board, that superintendents in Lehigh County were expressing a strong desire to look at starting the school year pre-Labor Day. In fact, suddenly, I moved last year. And I think, I don't know if I talked about specific reasons, but I also then mentioned the same thing last September at a board meeting, that we were working diligently. Now, I will tell you tonight that the following school districts are moving in this direction. And I can't say for the record if all their boards have approved this, so I don't want to, in essence, hang my colleagues out. But in our meetings, certainly, what I talked about last time was a majority of districts in Lehigh County moving that way. And I can tell you that East Penn would be in the majority of school districts right now. I believe the Catty, Caddis-Sawkland, Lehigh, Northwestern-Lehigh, Salisbury, Southern-Lehigh, certainly, Palmerton would be not. The only reason that Parkland, Allen Town, and Whitehall would not be moving in, certainly, they have some, they have some issues, and they got some legal advice that they don't want to change your calendars until they have a contract assigned. But I can tell you that those superintendents, at least Parkland and Whitehall, have been thinking about moving to pre-Labor Day as well. And I think this is an inevitable move. And I can recall speaking about this, and really, the main reasons are pesty, unfortunately. We don't know, quite frankly, when the keystones are going to come back. However, if you look at the news, we found out last week that Secretary of Education Tom Ellis has now put a request in from Secretary of Education Duncan to, in essence, freeze AYP. But there's, in the small, fine print, he's asking that the state have the ability to trade in the 11th grade PSAs from keystones. So, and our concern originally was the fact that keystones were going to be given in late March. And certainly, by moving that calendar, the date we're proposing for starting next year's August 27th for school day, that would give our teachers more time to address the curriculum, and certainly more time for our students to be exposed to content. The other thing is, PSAs are always a moving target, and so we certainly want to give our kids as many days as possible. And then, I think this year personified the craziness we've had with the weather. And so far, so good. We haven't had any additional bad weather days. But starting in August, unless we get another hurricane and flooding conditions, at least we get another four days. And I think, because without saying, and what I'm about to say shouldn't shock anyone, that it's very difficult maintaining a high degree of enthusiasm for education when you're in school in late June. And so I think the days that we'll spend constructing, on August 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th, will certainly, I would say that it's going to be more meaningful education than the days near the middle and late June. So for those reasons, we're asking you to pass or to adopt a school calendar. And again, just the highlights. First day for students would be August 27th, the last day would be June 10th. As you can see in the schedule, everything is pumped up, awake. And I, you know, we've talked about this internally with our administrators. I think we have 100% endorsement of this. I run this by our Teachers Association. We had a couple of minor questions on some dates, no big issues. I think it's been out and about. I think it's the worst kept secret in the world. The only phone calls we're getting in the office are really from parents saying, "Make the decision, and let's get on with it so we can get our schedules." I haven't heard any gross gnashing of teeth or screaming that this is something we might not want to do. On the other hand, I've heard a lot of positive comments that it's long overdue. Mr. Ballard, I know for years you've talked about legislature moving. I'm proposing legislation that would force school districts to start after Labor Day, but the great majority of school districts in Pennsylvania now start pre-Labor Day. In fact, I think every school district in Northampton County does. They made that move years ago. And this is not something a typical Lehman, Folsberg, and Avon Road, we started before Labor Day. So that's the calendar we propose. The only thing that I'm working on, and Dr. Tarma and I have to work with Mr. Kiparata, Mr. Selfies and Mrs. Vincent, is looking at what we call Act 80 Day. That simply means that some of our students come in, we release them early in the day for basically staff development. We're trying, we're going to try to coordinate this countywide because we're very conscious that we want to match up as closely as we can with LCTI for starting dates. And I think if we get some cooperation among the school districts and move an Act 80 Day until November 6th, we can, it'll be great happiness among those of us who will not be starting, or at least proposing not starting after Labor Day. So, right now, Mr. Hornberger's in a tough situation. But I think the superintendents are coming to a resolution. I think we've shown great cooperation, and I think Dr. Hornberger certainly understands that. And so I think the school districts can come some accommodation about accommodating LCTI students. That's it, certainly any questions you have, I'll entertain your questions. But it's our intent to put this calendar before you on the next board meeting.
Do you want to entertain questions on that first?
Whatever. Yep.
I'm noticing that, I'm noticing that the anticipated extension to the school calendar, if we would need it for weather, would run through Thursday, June 13th. But we would also have flexibility if we had another crazy, extension of crazy weather to continue further, would we not?
Right. Well, the one thing, we're not granting these in order. And I think what we're going to try to do is massage this. If we have a horrible day, we would certainly look at some holidays. And again, we've talked about this with other superintendents. So I may come back at some point and get some kind of consensus in the county as to what, if we have any good days, what days we might approach too. Yeah, but that's, that's basically, the worst case scenario would be moving the school year to June 13th, based on this right now.
I would also note that there is a long Labor Day weekend in Hamilton's calendar, with the 31st being a Friday evening, the day off. Other questions for Dr. Seidenberger on the calendar issue?
Yes, are there any?
Mr. Bacher?
Are there any financial incentives to be in the majority, or other incentives to be in the majority of school districts adopting one calendar or the other?
No. No, it's, I'm honest, I think it's basically, our primary motivating thing for doing this is to give our kids more time for quality education. I think that's it. I think Allentown has some specialized issues. But other than that, I think, at Parkland, I know Mr. Steve Zach had some negotiations going on rather than, again, into an awkward situation. I would suspect that they will be going this way next year as well. Whitehall, I can't comment on Whitehall this year. But I think the desire is there.
There are some coordination issues on the calendar.
Mine.
Other questions? All right, Dr. Seidenberger, continue.
Thank you. Last board meeting, I reminded the board that we had a lot of positive comments about our students performing. And again, I just wanted to remind you that the Lower Country Middle School cadence choir was also out and about during the holidays under the direction of Mrs. McGonig. They performed with Dumeas Triangle, Chris Kindelmark. And what really, I think is really special, they also made appearances at two senior citizen nursing homes. So probably our kids will go out and do that, those kind of visits. We were very happy last week. Channel 69 came out, I don't know if anyone saw it on the news. We featured Scott Deidra and our high school architect classes. And we're actually going to send you an invitation. Our high school kids designed and are constructing a model playhouse. For, we have an early childhood development class, Mrs. Day's class. And we're going to invite you down. And this is quite a project. And talk about project-based learning. Had a chance to visit with the kids in the class last year when they were agreeing on the design. And these kids were so psyched. We used our CAD/CAM devices, and the kids through trial and error, went through lots of iterations. But I certainly want to thank Mr. Ritter and Mr. Glancy for their help and our crack maintenance guys who helped Mr. Deidra and his kids out with some of the more difficult things. By the way, this house, we've got to the borough, we have all the approvals. We're treating this as, you know, fixed construction. So our kids learned all, out of doubt, go get approvals. And just to give you highlights, this is a two-floor. Kids will be able to go upstairs, there's a staircase involved, there's dormers involved, there's wiring, lighting, staircase, sliding glass doors, a deck outside, a porch. So they have done all this work. And Mr. Deidra's looking at a finish date of February 7th, and there'll be a ribbon cutting, and we will invite the board members to see the great work there. The kids are so excited. And I know Mrs. Day can't wait for her students and kids to get in there. You know where it is, it's in the courtyard, right up, right up down from the cafeteria. So we're excited about that. Now, as Mr. Ershaw said, talk about surprises. I was on the phone today with Mr. Fosselman, I've talked to Mrs. Serbo a couple times today. They read the morning call. Evidently, there's one of these fine print things that are going on, we're not aware of. And as the earned income tax relative to Allentown's NIZ, which is Neighborhood Improvement Zone, evidently, there was legislation passed in 2009. And we're finding out that anyone who lives in this district in the form of a country or any of these places and works in downtown Allentown in the area that's affected by the new aquarium, for instance, PP&L, that those people do pay earned income tax. However, that is going to be held in escrow account by Burke County and can be tapped by, trying to find the right group, the, I guess it's Allentown, to help pay off some of the interest and principal on the loans for the development of the arena. So yes, our money's going to subsidize the new aquarium. But you don't get season tickets, Mr. Stoltz, I'm sorry. But we've asked, we're in the process of checking with Senator Brown to see what he can do for us in this regard. And we'll just have to stay tuned. We don't know much about it, but I can tell you that we'll be talking, and we'll come back to you when. And again, talking to Mrs. Serbo, I wish I could tell you, I have no idea how many people in this district are affected, especially PP&L and some of the other businesses, I guess. What's construction company? So we're going to try to find what's the list of businesses, and then, I have no idea. But it could be minor, it could be major, we don't know. So the good news is, they'll hold the money, and anything that's left over will get back in 2014. I have no idea what the impact is going to be. And not with interest, either. So there's legislation, talk about mandates, there is one for you.
Senator Brown, know that by this way.
Yes, I know. Well, we talked a little about it. Some of you received a letter from some parents regarding redistricting issues. Want to let the board know that I did meet with a group of parents for about an hour and a half the other day. And the only thing that I can tell you is what I promised them, that we'll take a look at it. Some people were a little confused, they didn't know. But I can tell you about, two years ago, I did speak publicly... But I can tell you about, two years ago, I did speak publicly that we would not be able to go through with the changes in the redistricting plan for middle school. And I was open and honest at the time, we just cannot move the enrollment around into IR and keep the enrollment down, and we can move a sixth grade team over to IR. And basically, with the finances being as tough as they are, I certainly can't see myself recommending to youth books any time in the future employing new teachers. So, we will be sensitive to the parent concerns, but however, we'll do our due diligence, we'll come back and report to the board. And I think it's probably, Mr. Barker suggests that we're going to look at lots of things. And we'll go over those numbers with you, and then I will call the parents back in, and we'll have a meeting with them, and we'll show them what the math is. If we can do it, we'll certainly recommend it, but if we can't do it, then our commitment is we'll make sure that every child feels comfortable in the school in which they attend next year. And I'll be honest, we haven't heard any complaints from parents over the last years about middle school education. Okay, two things regarding Middle States. I guess this is good news, I have been elected Vice President of the Middle States Board of Trustees. Still Chairperson of the Elementary Commission, but now I'm in direct line to assume the presidency in two years. The current president is John Cavallo. Perhaps you've been reading about John in the newspapers. He is Chancellor of the Higher Ed Education System, and has a great guy like working with John. And for those of you who don't know, there are 12 members of the Board of Trustees, four from the Elementary Commission, four from Higher Ed, and four from Secondary Ed. And we basically set the direction and policy for the total Middle States organization. So, I'm honored to be the Vice President, two years most likely being the President. So.
Could you explain what Middle States does?
Middle States accredits schools and colleges throughout New Jersey, New York, New Jersey, Delaware, the District of Columbia, and Pennsylvania. So, we accredit schools. And that leads me to my next comment. And at Emaz High School, we'll be undergoing their Middle States visit February 13th through the 16th. They've adopted a protocol, there are many protocols in Middle States. They've chosen to do the Excellence by Design Protocol. It's a really neat tool, it involves strategic planning, heavy emphasis on what students are going to learn. It does have a futuristic look to it. I do know the Chairperson, and there is no conflict with, I don't work directly with the Secondary Commission, so I want to make that very clear, there's no conflict. I do know the Chairperson, he's a terrific guy. And at least at this point, I'm led to believe that there may be an invitation to board members. For those of you who never participated in the Middle States study, it's a group of educators from elsewhere, they come, they descend upon us, they live with us for three days. And basically, they're going to evaluate, see if you're doing what you say you're going to do, and then measure you according to the protocols. So we have a team of educators, I don't know the exact number, but tentatively, working with Mrs. Swan and the Chairperson, and really the Chairperson has the ability to control the agenda. So right now, we have tentatively scheduled February 15th, at the early time, 7:30 in the morning. I'm sure we get an invitation, and board members want to be, have a session with probably the Chairperson and maybe one other team, they'll ask you a couple of questions. It's not mandatory, but it's there as a courtesy. So maybe working with you, you can find one or two, a woodline meeting with the Middle States team. It's a great experience. Other than that, that's the only information I have at this time. We have received our performance audit. Those of you who remember, the state auditors were in last year, and you see this today. And I'm pleased to tell you that our auditor has found that the Eastman schools should comply in all, complied in all significant respects with applicable state laws, contracts, grant requirements, administrative procedures. So, we're happy about that. We're going to be asking Mr. Mone to give you a technology update. Mr. Mone, we've locked into a date?
Uh, no, not yet.
But we're going to ask Mr. Mone to give you a comprehensive review of where we are with technology. For those of you who missed the floor, I think you saw his presentation. And we're going to modify that a little bit, and give you an update as to what we're, exactly what we're doing with technology. And finally, I do want to thank so many people for their help in our first instructional rounds. And I have to tell you, the people that were involved, the teachers that were involved, to a person and administrators, found it to be an extraordinary professional experience. I'd never have gone through it myself. And to work with three teachers on the team, Lashley, Mrs. Franz, and I was with a teacher from Westcolesville, and a teacher from IR. My focus was the task. The team members were looking at what teachers were doing, what kids were doing, and what is the task. And then we debriefed after visiting three classrooms, and then we, without identifying any classrooms, we looked for overall patterns. And the work was extraordinary, and I was very tired at the end of three hours, I think it's most people were. And it was a good start, because one of the things we're looking at in the next three, four years is identifying what problem solving looks like in this school district. So, I would remind the people that this is not something that we have to do, it's something that we want to do because we think it's the best, best professional exercise that we know. We want to thank these press, certainly nice article, we thank you. I think your young man captured the essence of what we're trying to accomplish. Next up, Emaz High School. So we'll be doing that sometime in March, probably the team, about 50 people that would go in. And that would be kind of unannounced, people linking. And I do want to thank Dr. Pat Nellum and the Lincoln staff for being excellent professionals. The school looked great, the teachers were ready. And again, teachers were not aware who's coming in. They knew people were coming, they didn't know who was going to be visiting. It's always superintendent walks in with three other people, but people see me all the time, they're not, I don't intimidate them. So, but it was great for secondary teachers to be in elementary classrooms. And now, I think a lot of people are looking forward to going up into high school. And so, we'll be setting a date for that, we'll let you know when that will happen. Mr. Ballard, that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Seidenberger. Are there any questions on the rest of Dr. Seidenberger's report? None appearing. I will now take under consideration a motion on the personnel items under 6.2. Can I have a motion, please? All right, is there any discussion on the personnel items? None appearing, Ms. Bursel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolt.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Mr. Urshaw.
Aye.
Mrs. Donchus.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
All right, legislative, the legislature's just gotten back into session. I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen because they have a very bad budget situation that they're going to have to deal with. And I suspect everybody's gearing up for that. However, there is still a possibility of somebody trying to roll out an EITC increase, or a voucher bill, or something else. But for the most part, I think everything is going to wait until, just having hearings and whatever miscellaneous work they have to do, until the governor's budget speech is my take on the subject. After they hear that, then there'll probably be some fireworks in Harrisburg. But I think everybody's gearing up for a big budget battle. So, that's what I think is happening in legislative. And I did want to comment on the item that Dr. Seidenberger brought up about this Neighborhood Improvement Zone legislation. If you read the Allentown article, Allentown Morning Call article about this, I think the quote from Senator Brown indicates that he's not too supportive of doing anything for anybody else but Allentown because it said that he felt that everybody would recognize that improving the quality of downtown Allentown would benefit all of the suburbs, and they should be grateful essentially for the privilege of paying for the downtown arena. So if you have a difference of opinion with Senator Brown about that, you might want to let him know. Because basically, this is more than just Lehigh County even. It's people who work in Northampton County, it's people who work anywhere. If your physical employer location is in downtown Allentown in that improvement zone, and I'm not exactly sure of the boundaries, I'm not sure, I know that the PPL Corporate Plaza, which is the new building, is in the zone, but I don't know if the tower is in the zone, for example. So, but anyway, there's a number of people working for books, there's some other large employers down in that area. Anybody working for any of those entities, your taxes are going to go to Allentown, not to your local municipalities or your local school districts. So, that's something that caught everybody by surprise. We hear about these Keystone Opportunity Zones and all those other zones, but this Neighborhood Improvement Zone is something entirely different. And it has sources of revenue that all of us in the outside didn't expect Allentown to be getting. So, that's a probable hit on our budget because it's all of the earned income tax from these individuals goes into this fund, and then they use the fund to pay off the mortgage on the arena. And it's not clear whether there will be any surplus. Knowing the way Allentown government operates, I doubt that there will be. So, that's a personal comment. So, I would suggest that, like I said, you might want to voice your opinion to Senator Brown about how happy you are to help out with the development of downtown Allentown. And that's the extent of the legislative report. Are there any questions? Mr. Barker.
Can you, you mentioned EITC, what is that acronym? Or did I get that right? You mentioned I-.
That is a scholarship program that is funded by tax donations from corporations. In lieu of paying taxes, they're allowed to make contributions to this fund. And that fund is then used to fund scholarships at private and parochial schools throughout the Commonwealth.
Mr. Stolt.
Feel free to give your opinion on this, but now with Mr. Cher's eye running for Congress, I don't expect anything particularly interesting to happen in the mass of representatives for quite some time. And I've gotten feedback from a couple of legislators about effects too, so.
Well, there are many factors.
I can either be helpful or harmful, but additionally, I would recommend that Pat Brown reread At the Shrub because this toy sounds like something right out of there.
Well, we won't go into literary allusions here because there's several that could be used. But anyway, all right. Let's go on to business operations. Does anybody have any objection to moving items one through five together? One through five and number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, one through five and number seven, six has been removed.
Did you keep number five out?
What was that?
But I keep number five out.
All right, that's to add number five, so it's one through four and number seven. Any further objections? Do we have a motion on that? All right, any discussion? None appearing, Ms. Bursel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Urshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Donchus.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolt.
Aye.
Ms. Hye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion on number five, please?
No, no. Second.
All right, now a discussion. Ms. Donchus.
I just had questions basically for clarification. This is something that is, it's not new, like it's renewed every year, is that correct?
Actually, it hasn't been renewed. In the past, we've used this year after year, but they had not required this kind of a contract. So we've actually, you know, take part into it, they sent us a bill for their services. We had paid the bill and received the services, which have been very beneficial to us. At this point, they're being utilized by their solicitor. But it would be a good idea to document that arrangement.
Just officials are using this.
Okay, but it's 15%, like a normal administrative fee, that's some high.
It's about $4,100.
Could you speak up, Mr.?
I'm sorry.
It's the $2.55 that's charged per employee. We have about 1,600 employees, so the total of this is about $4,100. I have exact numbers of people.
And do we have to pay the child when they come inside?
No.
Mr. Barker.
I have a question on Section 4.1, the last paragraph. It mentions cases where the insurance trust can terminate the agreement and not return any of our annual fee. And I understand the ones if we don't comply and whatnot. But one of the conditions is Section 4.2, which says that they can terminate it at any time at their sole discretion. And I'm a little concerned, I know we have agreement and it has happened in the past, but I'm just wondering why we would allow them to terminate the agreement at any time and not give us a partial refund, if I'm reading that correctly.
Mr. Ballard, I read that section, I can explain it.
Mr. Urshaw.
There, the part that's not refundable is a 15% of the administrative fee if we fail to fill out the survey. So they ask us to complete a form and submit it that lists numbers of employees and other information so that they have that for our records. If we fail to submit that on time, and they have to follow up with us, they charge us 15% of their total fee, so that would be 15% of $4,100, or a little over $600. And what they're saying is that if we terminate early for any reason, they're not going to refund to us that 15% penalty for us failing to fill out the survey on time.
But the language in the form says, "Any portion of the annual fee to the school entity, if notice of termination is given," and it lists several reasons, "but/or if the insurance trust is terminating the program pursuant to Section 4.2 of this agreement." And 4.2 just says that they can terminate at any time with 90 days' notice. So, it seems like we could pay them in January, I don't think this would happen, but if we could pay them in January, they could give us 90 days' notice. And 90 days later, the agreement would be terminated, and we wouldn't get any, a parade share back.
Where is that language that you're referring?
So, bottom of the three paragraphs. I'll read the full thing. Except that the insurance trust will not return any portion of the annual fee to the school entity if the notice of termination is given because the school entity has failed to perform any obligation hereunder or make any payment due, or if the insurance trust has terminated the program pursuant to Section 4.2 of this agreement. And Section 4.2 of this agreement says, "Notwithstanding any provision to the contrary, the insurance trust may terminate the program at any time at its sole discretion by giving the 90 days' notice thereof to the school entity, which thereby terminates the agreement."
Yeah, so what they're saying is if they decide to stop offering this completely, this service, not cancel our participation, but discontinue it completely, yes, they would not return a portion of fees. But, Mr. Glancy, I think you said we've been using this service for years?
Well, there's also the second sentence of that last paragraph that says, "In the event that the insurance trust gives a notice thereby resulting in the termination of the agreement, within 90 days after the effective date of such termination, the insurance trust will return a pro-rata portion of the annual fee described in Section 3.6 of this agreement."
So it's just terminating the program entirely, not terminating the agreement?
We've used this for whatever. Ms. Donchus.
On the four point four section then, is it typical to just leave, um, language like entitled reasonable fees and not to have a cap or, uh, something more, um, about it, about what kind of fees to pay?
Well, if they terminate the agreement, they're going to have to have an agreement with us to carry on any additional things. And so they're just saying that they would assume reasonable fees. We don't have to do anything with them to get to do that. You see what that says? It just says that if they terminate and then they go and do services for us, they will expect reasonable fees for that. It doesn't say we have to deal with them or we have to take their services. Are there any other questions? None appearing, Ms. Burtz will be called to roll, please.
Ms. Halli.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mrs. Donchus.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Urnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Connaught.
All right, are, is there any new business to come before the board this evening? Uh, none appearing. Uh, we had a clear session before this meeting to discuss, uh, personnel, uh, real estate, and litigation. Uh, there will be a next board meeting, uh, on February thirteenth. And you're all invited to attend the, uh, EHS Jazz Band Swing Dance on Friday, February third. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, no.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you.